Welcome to the September 27th Oshkosh Common Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Muggerauer?
Here.
Hansen is excused. Miller? Wojciechowski?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Five present.
All right, please stand for the invocation. Deputy Mayor Muggerauer will lead us in the invocation, followed by our students Evan and Hadley of Roosevelt Elementary, who will lead us in our pledge.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll hang around for just a quick second. She's got something for you.
Thank you so much for leaving us in the pledge this evening and joining us and stay for the rest of the meeting.
And this evening, we have a presentation, I believe.
No, sorry.
Oh, okay. Citizen statements. Do we have folks registered for citizen statements?
Elizabeth Rudman? Are you here for this or for a different item?
I put, yes, I'm sorry, a different item. I forgot to put the J under J.
Thirty-one under J. Thank you. Sorry, no one is registered.
All right, very good. We'll move on to consent agenda then, please. A motion and a second for consent.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on consent? Do we have anyone registered to speak on a consent agenda item?
No.
All right, please call the roll.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
And we'll move right into new ordinances. We have three new ordinances this evening. There will be no action items on these tonight. Ordinance 22404 designate bike lanes restripe with road diet, South Main Street, both sides from South Park Avenue to Wacca Avenue. Traffic and bike and pedestrian advisory boards recommend approval. Again, no action on these items. Twenty-two, four, oh, five amend sections two dash seven and two dash eight of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to elections. And I don't know if the city attorney or the city clerk would like to just give a brief summary of what we're doing with this new resolution, new ordinance.
So this ordinance just reflects what is allowed in the statute. So currently, our ordinance allows us to have seven or more poll workers. The statute actually says that we can have as few as five because we have voting equipment. It is not my intention to go down to five. However, just for emergency purposes, we figure it might as well match what is allowed. It also will allow us to do shifts for our poll workers. We've heard from many of them that it's difficult to do a sixteen or more hour day. So this will allow me to schedule people in shifts. And it also recognizes that they'll be paid, which is their current practice. It just puts it into the ordinance.
Very good then. So I think that's a little plug for needing a few more shifts for the polls.
We are always looking for people who are willing and able.
You heard it here. All right, thank you. Ordinance twenty-two, four, oh, six approve zone change from suburban mixed use district SMU to suburban mixed use district with a planned development overlay, SMUPD, for property located at two, one, zero, one, West Ninth Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. And we will go on to our pending ordinances. Twenty-two, four, oh, seven. Do we have anyone registered for twenty-two, four, oh, seven?
No, we do not.
All right, this is to approve zone change from heavy industrial district, HI, to heavy industrial district with a planned development overlay, HIPD, for property located at three, eight, one, five, Oregon Street. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
New resolutions twenty-two, four, oh, eight. Do we have anyone registered on this item?
No, we do not.
All right, this is to approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for an outdoor storage area at three, eight, one, five, Oregon Street. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the GDP and the SIP. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution twenty-two, four, oh, nine. Is there anyone registered?
I should clarify, we have several people who signed up under J. I'm assuming that that's item thirty-one under J. If there's anyone who intended for a different one under thirty-one, can you just let me know? Okay, I don't believe we have anyone.
All right. That's to approve acceptance of waivers of special assessment notices and hearings for sanitary sewer and water laterals relating to contract number twenty-one, oh, three at two, eight, one, five, and two, eight, two, two, Oregon Streets.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I guess I would have a question, Mr. Rabi. Why would we waive the notice on these special assessments and hearings?
These are a couple of things that came up during construction. One was a request of a property owner. And another one, actually, I believe both of them were requests of property owners during construction. So they were not included in the public hearing. So since the property owners requested the additions during construction, we have them sign waivers of hearing so that we do not have to go through the expense of having another public hearing to add this to the final resolution.
So this is a convenience to the property owners?
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, any further discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Twenty-two, four, one, zero. Is there anyone registered for this item?
No, there's not.
Amend final resolution for special assessments for sanitary sewer and water laterals relating to contract number two, one, zero, three, slash, two, eight, one, five, and two, eight, two, two, Oregon Street with signed waivers.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
And our final new resolution, twenty-two dash four, one, one. Approve ARPA allocations for non-infrastructure purposes. And I think we have a few people signed up for that one.
We do. First is Alan Hartman.
Welcome.
Thank you. Nice to see all of you. I'm in a unique position to comment on this. In nineteen ninety-nine, the community foundation, the university, and the chamber pooled their resources, financial and human capital, to create the Downtown Partnership Redevelopment Committee. I was privileged to facilitate those meetings. It was comprised of community leaders, members of the city staff. Our job was to create a development plan, a redevelopment plan for downtown. Those of you here at the time may remember how particularly the one hundred block looked then compared to how it does now. As a result of that, the city invested in a new city streetscape. The developers created new housing and commercial properties. But the grocery store that was in the plan didn't never materialized. So in two thousand thirteen, a number of community members, including a number of folks I see here tonight, Brenda Haynes, our late Peter Westart, and Paul Van Aken, and others, birthed the Oshkosh Food Co-op. My family, my daughters Elizabeth Hartman and Amy Davis, support a number of things in the community, including the food co-op. Unfortunately, the co-op launched right before COVID. And as you know, many startups failed. Many startups launched right at COVID, failed because of the unique challenges of the pandemic. It was only the ingenuity, the commitment, the effort of not just the staff, but the board and the founders that it survived. So we're here tonight humbly asking for some support. Remember, it was over twenty years ago that we first identified the need for a downtown grocery store. I'm past chair of the United Way Board. My family and I are past chairs, campaign chairs. We're very aware of the challenges facing poor and people who have limited mobility who live in the food desert downtown. This will help develop the downtown, but it also will help people who need it. So I respectfully ask that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda Haynes?
Good evening. I'm Brenda Haynes, twelve thirty-five Wisconsin Street here in Oshkosh. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the Board of Directors and the nineteen hundred and seven member owners of the Oshkosh Food Co-op to ask for your support for the co-op's ARPA grant funding request. For those who may not know, the Oshkosh Food Co-op is a community-owned grocery store located at the corner of Jackson Street and Pearl Avenue. And the food co-op opened in July of two thousand twenty-one with a vision of strengthening the local economy, promoting health, and building community. The co-op strengthens the local economy by sourcing approximately twenty percent of its goods from local growers and producers. Things like Thunderbird Bakery Bread, Old and Organic Produce, Allenville Farms Corn, Lemur's Dairy Milk, Polora's Cafe Salads, Joy Kambuka, just to name a few. Already, this has put hundreds of thousands of dollars into the local food economy, helping local producers grow their businesses. The co-op promotes health by bringing fresh, healthy food options to the central city. As many of you know, and as Al just described, the city has had a goal of having a full-time, full-line grocery store in the central city for nearly two decades. But it appears that a central city grocery store may not fit the plans of chain grocery stores. So community members decided in two thousand thirteen that it was time to work together and champion this long-desired goal for the central city, to bring a community grocery store, community-owned grocery store, together. From the beginning, the co-op was envisioned as a not-for-profit business, balancing mission and margin to address the USDA-designated food desert. To help serve our income-limited neighbors, the co-op accepts SNAP EBT payments. And in June, the co-op launched a Food for All program, which offers a ten percent discount on many items for individuals and families earning up to two hundred percent of the federal poverty guidelines. The program is funded through the generous roundup at the register of other shoppers and through funding partners. And then the third piece of the co-op's vision is really to build community, creating a place where people can gather to build social connection and combat social isolation. The co-op holds weekly volunteer-led grocery gads, an opportunity for people to meet and get some steps in while enjoying each other's company. And the co-op sponsors afternoon patio jams, bringing together local musicians and music lovers. And the co-op is home to a community room that's available to individuals, nonprofit organizations, businesses, anyone who needs a place to hold an event in a convenient central city location. So why is the co-op here tonight? Well, to answer that question, I need to take you back to March of two thousand twenty. As a co-op, our volunteer teams of community members were deep in a capital campaign, raising funds to open the store. We were eighteen days from our deadline to secure the location when the national COVID emergency was declared. And our board faced a difficult decision. Do we continue to move forward? We didn't have a crystal ball as to what the effects of the pandemic would be. We completed our capital raise with a loan from the city's revolving loan fund administered by GoEDC. We then secured the location, broke ground, hired a general manager and staff, and began work to open the store. And when the store opened last July, I think we all had hoped that the worst of COVID was behind us. But in fact, and in fact, the first couple of months were celebratory. Then Delta hit, and Omicron followed. And the disruptions were many. Supply chains, food prices increased dramatically. Gatherings were considered unsafe. And hundreds and maybe even thousands of employees who had previously worked in downtown Oshkosh in offices were working from home, which reduced the flow of potential shoppers. So people were more reluctant also to leave their routines and try shopping a new store. So as a result of those factors and others, co-op sales are thirty-five percent below projections. Now, like many small businesses that were in operation at the start of the pandemic, co-ops nationwide got help facing these challenges by applying for PPP loans. Unfortunately, the PPP loan program closed before the co-op opened its doors. As a co-op board, we have now revised our tenure projections. We have a full year of sales under our belt, and we have revised and made a plan. We've benchmarked our growth and expenses against other small food co-ops nationwide. And we've already made and will continue to make changes to our business plan, operations, and marketing. The revised pro forma shows that it is possible for the co-op to succeed with your help tonight. So that's why I'm here, to ask that ARPA funds be used to repay the loan on the co-op's behalf to the city's revolving loan fund administered by GoEDC. These funds can be repaid directly to the loan fund. The one-time relief will help the co-op offset a direct impact of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Other communities across the country are using ARPA funds for this purpose, helping startup food co-ops get established in their communities. And this funding will help the co-op achieve its overall mission of operating a thriving grocery store in the heart of Oshkosh. We invite you to visit the store and see the progress that's being made. And we thank you in advance for your consideration tonight.
Thank you.
JD Gildemeister?
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm JD Gildemeister, general manager over at the Oshkosh Food Co-op. I have been here since May, so was not here at the start of the co-op and the transition in this area. However, have been part of conversations for a long time, especially trying to move causes like this forward, especially with healthy food initiatives and trying to get people involved with that. There has been many discussions with the co-op as far as pricing and their price perception within the community. We took, when I came onboard, a deep dive to make sure that we were actually fulfilling those needs within the community, understanding that this is an area that definitely needs help with those underprivileged individuals. As Brenda mentioned, we launched the Food for All program in June. That was shortly after I came onboard. With the help of partner agencies throughout Oshkosh, specifically Bewell Fox Valley, a United Way initiative that not only is Oshkosh, but the Fox Cities and up into Green Bay. We've worked with the UWO Cabinet, the YMCA, and Oshkosh Boys and Girls Club, Foodwise, part of the Wisconsin Food Share Program, many local schools and universities, Feeding America, and many more to try and help launch this program, to actually work with those individuals to try and have a successful launch. Our goal in the first year was to have one hundred people as part of this program. Within the first couple of months, we're proud to say that we're already halfway to that goal. And it's already providing a valuable impact on this community. With that, we are already seeing as well, not just with the Food for All program, but also EBT sales in other areas with here for those as part of food poverty. It's ten percent of our sales and growing. So a huge initiative that we're trying to tackle to try and bring that forward. Mentioning previously as well that my background, I've actually been in the restaurant and hospitality field for over twenty years, have led many large businesses, especially those who have had troubles in the beginning with startup to try and help them succeed. So coming onboard, as Brenda mentioned, revising our plan, not just for the current year, but over the next ten years, to show that this will succeed and actually be a valuable staple in the community. So asking for you to all vote in favor of this, just to help us get past this little hurdle that we had from opening. We couldn't plan on the first year of having to deal with the different COVID variants and other initiatives or other circumstances like the bridge and stuff that we have going downtown. But the one area that we've shown success in, especially over the last few months, is our member ownership base has continued to come in and shop. They're wanting this to succeed. We continually, week after week, are growing members, both for the Food for All program and actual members, to try and help make that. Over half of our sales is coming from that week over week and continuing to increase on those projections. So from that, I would ask that you vote in favor of this, to help make this a success and provide a staple downtown for the Oshkosh Food Co-op. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Corbin?
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Father Chris Corbin, and I am here to speak in favor of providing ARPA funds to the food co-op. When I got to Oshkosh last year, starting this new position as the rector at Trinity Episcopal Church, one of the things that I was gifted with was a membership to the food co-op. And when that happened, my first instinct was, great, you gave me a membership to a grocery store. That's not something I realized that I needed. And as I got invested more and more in what that meant, because having been given a membership to this grocery store, I figured that I should probably shop there a little bit and find out what that was all about. I learned that this was an endeavor that several downtown faith communities were intimately involved in helping develop. So Trinity was involved in helping to develop the food co-op. First Congregational was involved in helping to develop the food co-op. As I got more and more involved, I realized that this was not just a membership to a grocery store. This was a membership to a vision about what we could do here in our community, what we could do to help build a sense of belonging and a sense of justice centered around that most basic of human necessities, food. So as I got more involved in the food co-op, I was invited to be on the Food Justice Subcommittee that the board has. And in that involvement, I learned about the interest in not just talking about food justice related to the food desert that does exist there. That is certainly part of the vision of providing good, healthy food to people who would not have that available to them otherwise because of mobility issues and because of cost issues and that wouldn't be available even by for-profit industries that would not be able to provide the same quality of food in the same location. But I learned that this wasn't just about food justice in that way. It was indeed about providing a sense and place of belonging for people who have not always necessarily had a sense and place of belonging in this downtown community. It was an endeavor about providing integration for people who have sometimes felt disintegration from the place that we live. This led me then to get not just on this Food Justice Subcommittee, but to be involved as a board member. I ran for the board and came onto the board. So realizing that this is more and more not just a grocery store, I have been asked to help manage volunteers. And in this role of coordinating volunteers, what I have realized is the food co-op is backed by dozens and dozens and dozens of dedicated people who work, put in hours and hours every week to make sure that this organization continues to exist with no compensation on their behalf because they believe in the mission, they believe in the vision of what the food co-op offers. This is not something that you find with just a grocery store. One example of the way in which this provides something more than just a grocery store is that in my conversations with groups that do work with refugees and immigrants, some of those who are most disadvantaged in our communities, there's interest in engaging more and more with the co-op because it provides an entryway into the American food system that's not nearly as overwhelming as other big grocery stores in the community. It's not just that it's in a food desert and it's easier for certain people to access. It's that its scale actually allows for people to engage more easily if they're not used to buying food in a grocery store. So I really hope that you will vote to provide funds, not just for a grocery store, but for a vision of hope and belonging here in Oshkosh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Tatum?
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Oshkosh Food Co-op's seat of ARPA funds. And many before me have said principally the same thing. So I'm happy to iterate the same points over and over again because they're so crucial to our community. The co-op, as you've heard, was adversely affected by COVID and its variants. Slowdown of individual fundraising. COVID itself caused significant changes in everyone's personal shopping habits. Because we were new in business, we weren't able to launch COVID safety remedies, such as online shopping, curbside pickup, home delivery. Sales flattened and decreased. So why is it important for Oshkosh to have a thriving food co-op? Almost over nineteen hundred current members and six hundred and twenty donors and lenders think it's important to have a food co-op that supports local businesses and addresses our community's need for food insecurity. The co-op prioritizes purchase from local businesses. Data tells us that local business sales normally increase from twenty to two hundred percent when a food co-op opens. Our current local product spend is about two hundred thousand dollars. The co-op launched a Food for All program, which you've heard before this evening. This offers a ten percent discount on most products. Qualification is simple for those up to two hundred percent of the national poverty rate. Our collaborative partnerships were founded with other agencies and organizations to help address this food insecurity issue. These are Feeding America, Foodwise, the Oshkosh Boys and Girls Club, the Oshkosh YMCA, Bewell Fox Valley, and the University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh Cabinet Food Pantry. The Oshkosh Food Co-op is part of the fabric of our community now. The community member owners, board, and committees all strive to make Oshkosh a great place to live and do business. Owned by over nineteen hundred member owners to date, all share equally in ownership and support the vision to serve beneficial public purposes. When profitable, the co-op will be a tax-paying entity. If the co-op receives ARPA funding, the money will go directly back to the community to repay the co-op's GoEDC loan, and the money will not go directly to the co-op. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the co-op, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Cynthia Thorpe?
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Thorpe. I live at eleven oh seven Merritt Avenue. And there'll be redundancy, but it's redundancy because I support the co-op and why I support the co-op. My commitment to bringing a food co-op to Oshkosh started early. I am one of the founding member owners of the co-op number sixty-three, a past board member, and I have supported the co-op as both a donor and a lender. And now I have the privilege to shop several times weekly at the co-op. I take pride in the accomplishments of the many groups and organizations that I support in Oshkosh. But I have never been prouder than the day the food co-op opened. What an achievement. I was part of a group that shared a vision and brought a food co-op to northeastern Wisconsin, our first, and one in downtown Oshkosh. As retired healthcare manager, my life's work has been focused on physical and mental health and wellness. So I naturally gravitate towards organizations that work for, care for, and serve others, like First Congregational Church, Menominee South Neighborhood Association, and the Food Co-op. Three groups that I am very passionate about. Three groups that I am very passionate about. Each of these groups include, in its mission, serving others, promoting connections, and Excuse me. There it is. And I believe that the Food Co-op is well on its way in achieving aspects of those three goals I just mentioned. A location was selected to address the food desert. A Food For Program, a Food For All program, has been implemented to help stretch the food dollars of those who need it. Healthy, locally grown food options are offered at the Co-op. The Co-op provides a market for local producers. The Co-op has a community room, a gathering space for all. The Co-op is hosting events, connecting people. And this is just the beginning of how the Food Co-op does and will impact its current surroundings. A location near the riverfront, close to downtown, and close to the university. This area of high-density living structure needs the Food Co-op. It's a grocery store that not only fills the void, food void of a food desert, but a Co-op store, a store that is innovative, responsive, and committed to creating community. I humbly hope you support this endeavor.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. My name's Tyler Claver. He is him. I'm also here to speak on behalf of supporting ARPA's, the approval of the, I'm sorry, I'm blanking here, the approval of the ARPA grant for the Oshkosh Co-op. So I'm a student involvement programmer on the Oshkosh campus. I oversee the Oshkosh Student Association, which is the student government body. Our main service that we started up a few years ago is the Oshkosh Food Pantry. I'm here to want to focus specifically on the relationship and the sense of community and support that we have developed with the Oshkosh Co-op. So around the end of March 2022, the Oshkosh Co-op has been giving and donating food supplies to the pantry. This has been happening twice weekly since then and currently ongoing. During that spring semester, the Co-op, or, sorry, the Food Pantry experienced an incredible jump in student usage. For those of you who like stats, I have some numbers here. So we compared some usage and outgoing poundage to the fall semester and fall 2021 to fall 2022. So total uses for students started out around 215 in the fall. That jumped up to over 610 individual users. In terms of, sorry, that was total uses, unique users jumped up from 111 individual students in the fall semester to over 219 students in the spring semester. Outgoing poundage started out at roughly 2,088 pounds in fall to over 4,096 pounds in the spring semester. So pretty much after starting the Co-op donations between the fall and spring semester, our uses doubled and our individual uses almost tripled, almost threefold. Without the support that we receive from these donations from the Oshkosh Co-op, just the issue of food insecurity that is being experienced by the students in our campus just would be tragic. Students would be more or worse off than before. Anecdotally, we've heard many comments throughout the last few months saying, "Thank you," or asking when the next order would be received from the Co-op themselves. We often hear stories of students who are, again, significantly food insecure. Food from the cabinet allows students to spend time on their studies and not have to choose between things like rent, tuition, and food. They don't have to choose between those. So the partnership with the Co-op has also increased community awareness and networking with our students, staff, and other resources to make our pantry a more sustainable program. Without the Co-op, our food pantry probably wouldn't exist like it does today. So again, I ask for your support in approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Krueger. Hannah, if you could please provide your address.
My name is Hannah Krueger. She/her/hers, my address is 212-311 Baywood Drive. Hi, everybody. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here tonight to speak on behalf of the Co-op. I am a part of the Oshkosh Student Association at UWO. I serve on the Executive Board as the Director of the Food Pantry, the cabinet that is on campus. Before this year, when I began as the Director, I volunteered roughly four to five hours a week in the pantry, helping serve other students, taking donations that we would receive from the Co-op, stocking the shelves, and it seemed that just as quickly as they were getting stocked, people were coming in and taking the food. I know students rely heavily on the food pantry, especially because with COVID, I know a lot of students are struggling with finding groceries and rent is going up. And so we have been so grateful for partnering with the Co-op and that we've had this opportunity. Like Tyler had just mentioned, I know that even from a volunteer standpoint, I have noticed the amount of users that would walk through the door would triple, some days quadruple, even be six times more than what it was during the fall semester to the spring semester. So we've been really grateful for the Co-op. They've done so many amazing things, and this semester, I've had at least five students ask me when our bread is going to come in, and we're really grateful for it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for helping me get to the right agenda item. My name's Elizabeth Redman. Thanks for being here. I have been involved with the Oshkosh Food Co-op since 2018, shortly after I returned to my hometown after spending 15 years away. I was absolutely thrilled to hear that we were working on a Food Co-op, and so I started my service on the Board of Directors around that time, before my business partner and husband convinced me that expanding our farmer's market booth into a commercial kitchen, in a commercial business, was a good idea. We were strategic in launching Thunderbird Bakery as a wholesale operation, allowing us to produce only what was ordered by our customers, which helps us minimize waste. We opened our licensed commercial kitchen in late 2019. Our wholesale partners range from local cafes, small markets, and specialty restaurants across the valley. We do not yet have our own retail bakery store, but we continue to sell at the area farmers' markets. What sets the Oshkosh Food Co-op apart from large chain grocery stores is that Coops make it easy to be a small, local vendor. The application process is simple. There are no free fill requirements, price negotiations, nor case minimums. The Co-op offers a place where our customers can find a diverse selection of our pastries and sourdough breads. It is the only place in the valley that has chosen to carry our products on all four of the days that our ovens are running. As you can imagine, this was a game changer for our business, helping our wholesale business grow over 80% this last year. We've hired more staff, received more calls about special orders, and love directing our customers to the convenient and unique location. We know this has been the story for many of the numerous local vendors that the Co-op buys from. Why do local vendors matter? It reduces the food miles that our food travels to get to us. It allows us to have direct relationships with our suppliers, which is integral when supply chain issues continue. The food is fresher, passing through less hands before it gets to us, which also boasts nutritional value. And access to fresh, local food is what more and more consumers are looking for when they are looking for a place to live and work. The Co-op makes these things possible for our community. We are in full support of the Co-op receiving the ARPA grant funding, so they can continue to help other small businesses grow and thrive. This funding is not going to one person or one organization. It is going to our community-owned grocery store, whose mission is to promote health, build community, and help grow our local food economy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's the end of the list. Well, thank you, everyone. We'll bring this back to Council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion. Katsmer Wojcowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's not too much more to add. I just want to say one thank you to everyone who came in, who wrote us emails, who aren't here today, about this, you know, really important project. When I moved to Oshkosh in 2015, it was the first time I had ever heard of the term "food desert" and did not know that Oshkosh was a food desert, at least in the downtown area. Now I live within walking distance of the Food Co-op and regularly, you know, go there to shop. You know, it was a great addition, one just to the area, but for people similar to me who are post-college, but maybe don't still have the means, you know, to go to grocery stores all that often, or for anyone, really, just to be able to have that resource available for them. I think just what we heard tonight shows how important it is, like it was said, this is more than just a grocery store. It truly does reach beyond that to different communities, you know, it's helping development in the area, you know, it just adds a lot to Oshkosh in general. So I'm very supportive of this. I know that the COTS program is also on this resolution, which I'm also supportive of, so I'm encouraging my colleagues to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Councilmember Wojcowski, you know, acknowledged, there's two ARPA grants here that are, we're going to approve or not, but specifically when it comes to the Food Co-op, and I'll admit, I struggled a little bit with this request from the get-go. But in the end, there's a couple of reasons I'm going to support it. One, the intent of ARPA was to help us rebound as a community, to fill those gaps that were left. In the business world, PPP loans were a big deal. That helped many a business get through, you know, some of the most toughest times that anybody can imagine. They didn't have that opportunity. And that's probably the overarching thing that sells me on this, is that they did not have that opportunity to take advantage of PPP when every other business did. Two, from a financial standpoint, this helps make our revolving loan fund whole, and it does so very quickly. As someone who takes the financial responsibility of this community seriously, that's a big deal for me, making sure that that fund is solvent, is whole, and that losses are minimized and mitigated when possible, and this is a way to do so. And I do that with, I mean, because the payment goes directly to GOEDC through the city's revolving loan fund, it's protected. And third, we did a similar approval earlier, very on, very early on, when we got the ARPA grant, or got the ARPA award. City approved a loan payment on behalf of the CVB for the Convention Center renovations that the CVB took on. We did a very similar thing, and it made sure that those impacted by COVID, and the CVB at that time was dramatically impacted with room tax dollars, it made sure that that, that they were made whole, that that debt was taken off of their burden, that they could go do greater and better things for the community. I hope by doing this that that helps the Food Co-op do those things, too. So in the end, that's, those are the ways, the reasons I'll support this ARPA grant. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor, for bringing up that precedent. I had completely forgotten about that. I have a day job, too. But no, thank you for bringing that up. That's helpful. This is inherently hard, right? This is inherently hard and kind of inherently weird for us. I think we, as a group, take pains to not pick winners and losers in our policymaking. Some may disagree with that, but I can say honestly, I think this group does. And when you're creating policy, you want to make sure that it's impacting everybody the same way. This is really hard, because inherently, we're taking this limited amount of money and we're allocating it, so like we're being asked specifically to pick winners and losers. Not everyone who sent an application in is going to get funded. So that's just the nature of this one-time funding. I'm glad we did pass that initial policy that laid out that 75% of our money is going to infrastructure and 25% to community projects. Not to toot our own horn too much, but you see a lot of communities across the country that have not created policies like that and are, at the very least, you know, don't have the type of structure we do to make these decisions. So for these two specific things tonight, we've gotten a few contacts, mostly positive. I think all but one have been positive, but I do think there's legitimate concerns that have been voiced to me about the COTS grant, about this being duplicative services for serving our homeless population, and concern that people are going to be operating within silos and not cooperating, so we're not working together to address the problem of homelessness in our community. And then for issues with the Co-op, people worried about supporting a nonprofit organization, and specifically concerned about the financial status of the Co-op. I think that everybody buys into the mission that was so eloquently stated here, but I think the concern is more financially. So I fall back on process in these types of situations. You know, we have an overall policy that was, that was, that we passed, that's being followed here. We had a very open and transparent application process for community and nonprofit organizations to apply for ARPA funding. So anyone that wanted to apply for ARPA funding had the capacity to apply for ARPA funding. And even though that deadline has passed, dare I say, city manager, since we still are giving money out, people want to keep applying, right? I'm sure at the very least, they'll get, they'll get a look. But since I mentioned the city manager, I do trust his recommendation in the staff report that the COTS grant will not be duplicative, that this is part of a comprehensive strategy to address homelessness. I trust the judgment that this ARPA request to the Food Co-op puts them in a position to make it financially, and I trust the judgment that this is a unique for-profit organization in that it's literally owned by the community. That's extremely, right, extremely unique in our community. It's also an anchor for a major development we've invested in. So I do get that there's going to be disagreement here, but I really hope that we don't fall down the trap of being resentful and thinking something good for one organization is inherently a negative for somebody else, because I think these allocations are going to make the city of Oshkosh stronger. When that happens, we all win.
Again, I'd like to thank everyone that spoke this evening and certainly did not want to be in the position of some kind of Shark Tank-esque competition. That's not meant to be sarcastic, but as was pointed out, it can be difficult to make these decisions. But I want to point out, one of the things that I find really remarkable about the Co-op application for this is the young person that spoke earlier about the connection between the university and the food bank or food pantry and the Food Co-op, you know, oftentimes you hear these things about the town gown disconnect, and this is one of those weaving tapestries between the university and the community that's very directly impacted, and very moved about the topic of the food justice. So appreciate those comments. I will be supporting this and certainly want to express appreciation to the COTS organization for clarifying and adding more detail to their proposal as well. So I'll be supporting both. Councilmember Ford.
I'm sorry, I forgot something important, which was, I wanted to make sure to thank the Food Co-op Board of Directors for offering to open up their books. I think that was a really important step, given the legitimate concern about the financial viability of the organization. And if you had not had a chance to look at the staff report, that is noted in there, which I think is, yeah, important. So thank you.
All right. If there's no other, please call the roll.
Moberour.
Aye.
Miller.
No.
Wojcowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie, 5-1.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We will move on then to council discussion and direction to city manager and future agenda items. First up is future agenda item, discussion of virtual meetings, October 11th.
Yes, Steph, I'll have a report to, for council to review regarding what we have learned and recommending regarding virtual meetings. That was a request of the council.
Councilmember Erickson.
One question that came up for me just after the meeting last night with DEI. Is there a plan to bring that to DEI? I know they had expressed some interests. I know they had expressed some interest in discussing it.
Quite honestly, that was, that was, their opportunity was last night, and it never came up, and I didn't, I neglected to bring it up, but I was surprised that it wasn't brought up, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I had mentioned to the mayor, I was deferring providing you with the report because I wanted to get their final input before I forwarded it. So without that, I'll have staff finalize the report.
Okay.
So while they may not necessarily be able to weigh in on that before the report comes in, they could individually email council members directly.
Sure.
Deputy Mayor.
Just a clarification on this one. You're giving us information that night. You're not coming to us with a suggestion for us to vote up or down that evening, or you're coming to us with information for us to process?
My plan was to give you a report, not a resolution for adoption, because I didn't want to drive the city attorney crazy trying to predict exactly where you would go with this, and you might tweak it. So I wasn't prepared to do that, so you're welcome, Lynn. But I wasn't prepared to do that, but the idea would be, give us direction so that we could come back at a subsequent meeting with whatever you wanted to do.
To Councilmember Erickson's point, just, that gives any board and commission who has an interest in this, it most probably will, whether you're on any side or in the middle of the topic, it will give them sufficient opportunity to interact with us on the topic afterwards, that they're not going to be kept out of the process. They have a chance to participate with us.
And with that said, I appreciate the discussion. I will, my goal is to give it to you this week because Mr. Tim behind the wall over there has been, it's, the bulk of it has been his work, and I appreciate Jake's work on that. But maybe what I'll do is we'll just have the departments distribute it to their various boards and commissions, just so they see it, they know what you're looking at. So thanks for the discussion point.
That's exactly what I was going to ask is, so does the report that you'll be providing us include input from any boards or commissions?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Although I would say that, not specifically asked, but we certainly were listening because I think that reflects various, there's varying opinions on all of the boards and commissions, and that's kind of the point.
And future meetings, we do have the joint meeting of the Oshkosh Area School District Board and council, October 27th at 5:00 PM, District Admin Office. Future workshops, budget workshop, that would be the final workshop, I believe, unless an extra one is requested.
We always have an extra date set aside for you, just in case, but that is entirely your option.
October 17th and 18th, 8 to 4:30-ish.
Ish is the.
For those of you who have two full days to view us going through that process. And council member announcements and statements. Any reports from council liaisons? Councilmember Erickson.
I just have one from Transit Advisory Board, met last week. So ridership overall has been making good progress, increasing. Go Transit has given just over 478,000 total rides in 2022 through August. They do also give the breakdown for student ridership. That continues to dramatically increase, but partially maybe because of school starting. Go Transit gave 5,243 rides total, just in the month of August of this year, and 82,482 rides total in 2022 through August. That's up about 101% compared to this time last year. And we also got to tour the brand-new bus, which was very exciting and cool to see. So, good stuff there.
Thank you. Any other council members? All right. I just have one to report, and that's from the Redevelopment Authority. We did appoint a new member and met this past week, had a number of items, and there were two items that we took a pass on at the moment for acquisition and proposals that were presented. And that's all I have this evening. We'll move on to city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple memos in your packet regarding budgeted items that we did some purchases on. One was a training management software for the fire department. The other one was a professional service agreement with Jacob for the treatment plant secondary clarifier. So happy to answer any questions, or it's in the case of the clarifier, Mr. Robbie's right here. And then I also have the outstanding issues. One of the things we did talk about last night, so I don't know if we need to necessarily repeat it, is the meeting we had with the Menominee Tribe last week. Very successful, real pleased with that. Mr. Maurer actually had an update this morning on the Chief Oshkosh plaque. It looks like we may, may, I would say, we may get the proof to look at. It is a 24-hour turnaround because it really isn't to edit it, it's more about to make sure it's correct. So Mr. Maurer's already been in touch with Mr. Grignan, with the tribe, so they're ready.
When is that?
Well, that's the big question. Within a few weeks, we're hoping, but we'll see. Once it's done, they're getting ready to put it in. So they want a quick turnaround because they plan to start going, putting into production immediately thereafter.
So the proofs will be, not just digital, but they will be actual, like, proofs? Physical proofs?
No, they'll be digital proofs.
Digital.
Because they're in another state, they're going to want 24-hour turnaround. So Rea's talked to the tribe, and they're ready, as soon as, they know they got a 24-hour clock, and they'll be ready to do it. And really, the purpose of them looking at is to make sure that there are, there are going to be symbols in the Menomine's language that only they're going to be able to assist us with, we won't have that capability. And they understand that. It's not to edit it, it's just to make sure, yep, they put the right swirl where the swirl needs to go, and I'm doing no justice to that explanation, but that's why we want them to look at it for us.
And I'll just add to that, too, that it was a great opportunity to meet the new tribal chairman, Chairman Corn, as well as the new intergovernmental affairs representative, Randall Chevalier, and the former IGA, Melissa Cook, who is now the Menominee archivist. And they were pretty excited. We did a little tour at the museum, Menominee Park, had some lunch and got some updates and opportunities that they'd like to explore. But I just want to say that I appreciate the fact that they did reach out to us and were quite interested in continuing conversations about other potential educational opportunities in terms of sustainable forestry in relation to our, you know, some of our Emerald Ashbor. A number of possibilities emerged from that visit, so I was really excited. And I just want to also point out that there previously was, on the outstanding issues, an item for city manager. It looks like it's dropped off, but to interact with different populations, and certainly that fell within his goal that we had given in that regard.
So that's in there.
Is it still there?
It's the third one down.
Oh, yes, yes, there it is.
Because I added all that stuff about this visit.
It is still there. Sorry. It's like less than six point, I think.
I think I dropped another one, and so it moved up. You were probably looking for it in the fourth position. It's moved up to the third position. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, everyone.